This meeting is being recorded.
Are we good? All right, welcome everyone. Sorry for the belated start to the October 14th Bedford, Massachusetts Select Board meeting. It's about 7:05. Before we get to public comment, if any, I want to announce that we received word, a former Select Board member, Frank, and I'm going to need some help with, Jeka, thank you very much, has passed away. Frank was on the Select Board in the 1980s, and he was also active in the Bedford Historical Society. So, we're grateful for his service, we're sorry for the loss of his family, and appreciative of the service he gave to the town of Bedford. So, thank you very much, Frank. So with that, I will move on to public comment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? No one present? Is there anyone online who wishes to raise their hand? They too may speak. Seeing no one, we will then move to, we have some information about a, would be TIF, if we approve it.
We're just going to promote a few attendees right now. We're going to start with Jane Orland. Hi Jane, can you hear us? And then if you want to let us know who else from your team is on, we'll promote them as well.
Jane, can you, ah, there you go.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Before you start, Jane, I'm Paul Mortensen, I'm the Chair of the Select Board, welcome. Matt, do you have any preparatory remarks before Jane launches in?
Yes, so I'll introduce Jane and her, I'll get them on, just making sure they're your intro comments as well. Jane, do you know who else from your team is going to be joining us? We have quite a few in the attendee list.
Yeah, it's Dale Haug, he's on, I can see him, I don't know whether you guys can see him.
Okay, if it's just Dale.
We can.
Okay, yeah, just Dale. And he's in London, so he gets given an award, what is it Dale, midnight for you, one o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, I'm doing my homework.
So Dale is here representing Advance Cell, and Jane is representing their brokerage company that's helping them out over here in the US. As this board is aware from your memo, Advance Cell is a radio pharmaceutical company that is looking to move or create a corporate headquarters, a US headquarters on Middlesex Turnpike here in Bedford. They've selected Bedford after reviewing multiple other municipalities and worked closely with the Mass Office of Business Development. And we're lucky that we have a quick timeline to work with them with our upcoming town meeting on November 3rd. They're hoping to finalize their lease for a large location around 100,000 square feet, plus or minus here in Bedford, by the end of this year. So being able to receive the next step approval from our board and approval from town meeting to negotiate a TIF in November really lends nicely to their timeline. They have a whole presentation prepared where they're going to explain their company and about what they do, so I'd like to turn it over to them.
Sure.
They're really the experts, and then I'm happy to answer questions that the board has, or, you know, from Jane or Dale.
All right, Jane or Dale, take it away.
I'm going to turn it over to Dale, because I won't do this justice, and it's a very exciting project, I work on a lot of life science companies, all over the United States, but this is one of those special ones. So Dale, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. How much time do I have?
You know, I, I, I'd like to say all the time in the world, don't, how long do you think it'll take Dale?
I believe five minutes.
Five, 10, that's not a problem. Feel free to take 10. We're interested in what you have to say. So, you know, if you wanted to go on for an hour, we might tell you, gee, that's a bit much, but 10 is easy, easy to do.
No problem. So, yeah, in terms of the fact that we are an Australian airport that radio pharmaceutical company, the company originated back in 2020 by its founders, the CEO and the CFO. The company was in essence more on the ability to generate very specific radioactive isotopes that can be used for the manufacturing of medicinal products. The company has raised approximately 150 million investment capital today. It is supported by quite a roster of very well-known venture capital investors, both simply in the Boston area, and those more broadly across Australia, Europe, and US. The main driving of the company's executive activities, the parts of other radio therapies, also radio healing therapies, and this is in essence a targeted therapeutic that is complicated to a radio virus. The idea behind that is that it provides very targeted, very specific delivery of radioactive isotopes to kill cancer cells. The company's lead program has been through phase one clinical testing, but the results of that have to be, as you can see, announced at a major oncology conference in the next, back next week. The lead program is focused on a special treatment for metastatic prostate cancer, that is late-stage oncology indication, where the data so far have been very encouraging, very compelling, next is standard care treatments, which is currently coveted, the compound that you may have come across that is marketed by Net安斯。So the company's product pipeline has the potential to never kind of foster revenues, and really provide potentially cureous entry for patients with late-stage oncology. The company currently has its internal manufacturing and development capabilities in Australia. It's, it's looking, over the course of the next year, to really establish and build its manufacturing capability in the US. Given the nature of the implications, also the modality of the therapeutic itself, manufacturing needs to be onshore within the US. The shelf life of its products, you know, from a radioactive half-life perspective, are about 10, just over 10 and a half hours. But that's the best thing for building manufacturing capabilities within the US. So I'm also thinking that something optimal on Q and A.
We're just moving with the presentation, Will.
Correct the background noise. All right, we'll see if we can work on that. We're not, we're hearing you well here Dale, in the room. Sounds like some of the other folks at home, who may be on Zoom, may be having a little trouble hearing you, but I'm not sure where that might be coming from. So you can continue.
Yep.
Yeah, I will carry on. So, yeah, the substance of the project we're looking to undertake is to build a GMP manufacturing capability for our, for manufacturing phytological products in the US, to be able to undertake clinical studies in the US of our lead phytological products for prostate cancer. Many of the due amount, it requires roughly 10,000 square feet, albeit the sole manufacturing. It will require, you know, 100-plus employees to be recruited into this facility, highly skilled, highly trained individuals with radio chemistry, the manufacturing experiences. We're probably looking to build the facility that will require capital investment on half of approximately 50 million US dollars. The project, we're looking to secure a first facility by the end of this year, and it will take us probably 18 months to bring that into operation. Aside from, you know, sort of the slides that have likely proved me, a couple of other features of the company, while it's attracted very significant investor base, we also have a couple of significant partners, one being Synopy Ventures, that have a large US presence. From a pharmaceutical perspective, they are an equity investor in the business. Likewise, we have a, I think they're a multi-program collaboration with United to help utilize our platform to develop some additional products using their in-house capabilities. So we have, we would have to be built quite a broad system, high-line of products that we're looking to put into the clinic, further through clinic, into commercialization, hopefully to benefit any cross-section patients with further cancer indications. So of course, I think I probably took these five minutes.
That was excellent Dale. I am going to start by saying, that all sounds so very exciting. You folks must be just over the moon with, you know, getting going, so congratulations to you, and the idea of Bedford being part of cutting-edge science and, you know, for the humanity of it is just, just superb. I have a question for our Town Manager, and then I think you can probably, you speak to it as well, is, what are the, Matt, the final strokes that we, we go ahead and do this, TIF, and, you know, we're at the altar, can they, you know, leave the altar? Like, this isn't, they don't have, as far as we know, a signed-up deal until they have a signed-up deal, right? We could approve the TIF, and they could say, "Thank you," but no thanks?
Yes, in short, that, I mean, that's correct. And then, you know, if that happens, you know, as you may be aware, but for the public, there's really no harm to the community there, because any of the incremental tax benefit of a TIF, which is the Tax Increment Financing Agreement, it's only based on the incremental value, based on the investment they make in the property. So if at any point in this process, they back out and don't make the investment in the property.
Understood, understood.
There's no harm to us.
But, so I guess then Dale, my only question would be, you're probably still working through with lawyers, lots of fun, getting the lease signed up. You haven't signed on the dotted line yet.
That's correct. We are, we are working through negotiations with hospitals. We are, yeah, advanced agents.
Yep.
But we are looking to move quickly, to be in a position where we can find a lease by the end of this year, beginning of next year, so we can commence both detailed design phase, and then begin better development construction next year.
And then I have one more question for the Town Manager that you can join in on as well. Who's the main point of contact with these folks? Is this an Eric Salerno kind of contact, and is they need help in kind of, you know, getting the?
Basically, it's just jointly Eric and myself, and internally, we've had conversations with some of our other staff, running the assessor's office, building and planning. But Eric and I are both, I guess you could call us both point people, because we're both on every email.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, that, I don't have any questions Dale, other than what I just said, and I would say that we have a great staff here at Town Hall, especially the Town Manager, and Eric Salerno, and just the whole staff in the Town Manager's office. I'm going to ask my board if they have any questions. Are you ready? Would you, that be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to start with my colleague on the right, if Sean Hannigan has any.
So, thank you, Mr. Haug, for coming and considering Bedford, and as Paul said, I think this is, it's really exciting what you're doing, and the potential of saving lives, that's just amazing. So thank you for doing that. So, I see you're privately financed, and you mentioned 100-plus employees. Looking ahead, let's say three, five years from now, are you planning on growing substantially beyond that? And if so, would you grow in place?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we would be looking to face expansion, but it's on the side to grow the local activities. So, the first phase of the facility built would be to ensure that we can support phase three clinical development of our compounds. And then we would, yeah, that would probably take us to around 100, 100 or so headcounts of the facility that we've entered. Yet as that compound progresses towards commercialization, we'd be looking to then build out, and ensure we have a greater manufacturing capability within this facility. So we'll be building it in a modular design, so we can grow the manufacturing capability in line with the map, to kind of mitigate the risks and issues that are related to radioactive isotopes faced in the past. And so, that growth, you know, it's not, not necessarily linear, but it would certainly grow to the point of maximum capacity, the point of commercialization, where we'd be maximizing the manufacture of our new products, but with additional capacity for further high-line products to grow within the facility. That would probably kind of, at some point in three to five, six year time, looking more like a two-month, three-month, at some point. In addition to the, you know, the drug product manufacturing capability, so we're also considering some additional supply chain expansion. And we would need, we'd get, adding a closer to commercialization. So it'd be a bit of a bringing in potentially some additional capabilities, so we can look at ensuring that, or ensuring that there's a high check point for that manufacturing process. So that's still, yeah, that element is still a work in progress, but, you know, ultimately, having a co-located case with a drug product manufacturing facility would maybe, would be a problem.
Okay, thank you. And so, looking ahead to that point where you get to say 300 employees that you mentioned, would that, would you build an extra building, or how would you accommodate that?
So, yeah, the building we're looking at currently has, we can either take part in building or the entire building.
Okay.
And that's, then, that's what we're currently considering, do we take the entire building with the basis that we can expand into that over the kind of dream, high-year period? Or we may take half the building, and then take an additional building in high pattern point in the future? So that's a live, live discussion for this point, is there, no live decisions will be made on that front for this point.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question before we can go to the other colleagues. Have you given thought to how you might fit into the Bedford community, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce and other activities we have around here?
Yeah, certainly, our, our goal is for us to, you know, to put it in here. Certainly, what we would be thinking of is particularly from a training and development perspective, how we can link it to different, you know, different institutions that can help support our growth and the training of staff that we bring on. There will certainly be, you know, very specific skill sets that we'll need to help develop, but potentially don't necessarily want to exist within the existing, you know, kind of local workforce. So maybe particularly about radio pharmaceutical development experience, you know, radiation safety, health and safety, GMP experience, those will be, we'll be looking to kind of connect with, in the broader, in the broader community of how we help to identify that talent and interact with, with that community. Likewise, from a therapeutic perspective, you know, of course, we'll be interacting more broadly with, you know, treatment centers, clinical science, you know, both, you know, locally and across the state, and more broadly within the US.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Sean took the community question. I have a question about the science. I think you said that the life of the radioactive isotopes, if that's the right term, is 10 hours from production to usage. Is that correct?
Yeah. So you said that, you know, you have to have a 10-hour half-life. Of course, itself, we, when we manufacture, we'll have a longer shelf life than the 10 and a half hours.
Okay.
By virtue of the way we manufacture. But the distribution, you know, is, you know, is more broadly constrained within a, you know, 10 to 12-hour driving range of a manufacturing facility. So we'd be primarily supporting treatment centers, clinical centers, that are within a approximately 10 to 12-hour driving range of all.
Only because we're next to Hanscom. Do you anticipate using flights out of Hanscom, or mostly driving?
I'm sorry.
Well, we are adjacent to a civil airfield, where there's civil aviation. Are you envisioning that you'd use flights out of the airfield, or to Boston, or trucking? What's your vision?
So, so the primary vision for us is, is for transport. I think air transport is an option for certain destinations, but it's a little problematic in terms of supply chain. I think it's a useful backup strategy, but wouldn't be our primary.
Yeah, that's my preferred answer, so thank you. We're not looking for more flights out of Hanscom, so I appreciate that. Neither are some of our attendees. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time late at night in London.
Dale Paul again. I do have a question. Is Is, you mentioned isotopes and that sounds very sciency to me. In terms of safety, could you just speak a little bit about in-house safety in case there are things that go awry? And then also too, would you expect that our local police or fire or first responders would need any special education or, you know, cluing in from you folks?
There's no specific, you know, digital infrastructure requirements, you know, by virtue of being very advanced.
Okay.
Of course, we would need to be managed by the rather, I think, you know, I couldn't say, but rather than power the regulations to ensure that we are appropriately monitoring and managing the regulations you have to be on the site. I think what we use for manufacturing purposes is, given it's relatively short, hard for any isotope, it's, it's not something that's problematic or hands around and we have environmental impacts or something like this. This is a well-tried and tested, you know, process with a lot longer isotopes than we operate with.
Okay, thank you. My colleague Volpa might have some questions. Is that true?
Yeah, it is true. Thank you very much, Paul. So this is wonderful. It's exciting and positive, just like everyone is saying, whoever, however this relationship came about, I think this is wonderful. You had mentioned that, it seems like you have a site already in mind and I'm wondering if, one, if you have others, you're looking at other sites as well? Are you looking elsewhere as well? And then also, this might be, this is more a question for Matt in terms of the other, the only other TIF that we have is Ultragenics, correct? Or do we have more?
There were a few approved somewhere around 10 years ago or so. I'm not sure if they're still active because they were way before my time, but I know the town has approved a few in the past. The most recent one, actually for both Ultragenics and STR were.
But STR didn't.
Sort of approved but not followed through.
Right, right. So I guess the only TIF that we have right now is Ultragenics. Are we looking to structure the same way as we would with Ultragenics?
Yep. So the exact details haven't been finalized, but what they preliminarily requested for, which is somewhere in the 10 to 15 range, which is very common, and starting at 100%, their request is for three years and then a declining TIF arrangement is very common.
Great. Yeah, so Dale, I guess my only question to you is, are, like, are you looking elsewhere as well? And then my suggestion is, my colleagues had mentioned getting involved with the chamber, but I want to put others out there. You know, if you come here, I know you're based in Australia, but if you come here, there's Middlesex Community College that would be great in terms of partnership and Middlesex III Coalition as well. So you're in good company.
Wonderful, yeah. So, yeah, so go back to your question. We, we are looking at, we've been looking at a number of sites. We've narrowed that down to now a priority of three. So we're tracking three sites at present, both within studios and also outside of studios as well. You know, so that is something we're looking to, you know, we have, in fact, next week, we, I'll be back in Boston next week to, you know, to review with, you know, our CEO and CISO, the final cultural design. We are looking to narrow it down, make it sufficient, hopefully soon. You know, hopefully there's much, much of the incoming information, data, we have to kind of make, make an informed decision. So I thought.
Excellent. Great question, Volpa. And one last board member, Terrence, any?
Dale, my colleagues are so good. They answered all the questions I would have asked, so I just want, I just have a comment. I want to thank you for your presentation. It sounds like you have a very exciting company and hopefully everything will work out. And if it does and you come to Bedford, I think you'll enjoy it here.
Before I ask for a motion from the board, I would also just say, Dale, as you are thinking about where Advanced Cell is going to be and you have any open questions, I think Matt and Eric Solerno would be more than happy to take your call. So don't, don't be wondering about something if you can pick up the phone call and get an answer to a query. So is there an interest in making a motion to?
I'll move.
We're going to go ahead.
I move that the board place a warrant article on the special town meeting warrant for town meeting authorization for TIF for Advanced Cell as presented.
Okay, so we have all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, five zero. One other item, Dale, is it's, I think somewhat implicit, but we later on will, at some point, be making recommendations to the town meeting saying, "Yeah, the select board thinks this is just wonderful." And it, does anyone want to jump the gun to make Dale feel happy about this? Or do we want to wait judiciously, think about recommendations?
Kind of waiting unless someone wants to jump in.
Okay, all right. I think we're fine waiting, but I, we made, so it went through. Thank you very much, Dale, and good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jane.
Good, thank you.
Bye-bye. We'll just wait there. Or he can go to bed now.
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing alcohol license from Holy.
Sure.
Anyone in attendance from Holy or we can?
Jim's not going to come tonight. No, I can explain. If you just.
Sure.
Make a quick.
I will move to open the public meeting, public hearing for Holy's alcohol license amendment application.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, five zero.
Great. Sort of same content as previously, although you remember when this last came in front of the board, it was really anticipated as more of a change of manager, but because they had checked off the change of ownership, that actually requires a public hearing. So we re-advertized for this meeting, but same sort of presentation to the board. One of the, the owner management is changing, but this is really an opportunity for the public if they have any comments.
Is there any comment from the public?
We'll just check.
We tell if anyone is online?
Just raise your hand if you're online for the Holly change of ownership public hearing.
Holy.
Holy.
Did I say Holly too?
I'm assuming not.
Okay, there's no one raising their hand, so should we close?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, five zero. Any further discussion or I'm ready for a motion?
I move the board approve Holy's alcohol license change of ownership interest.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? The ayes have it, five zero. Congratulations. Okay. Public hearing on the charter and bylaws.
I move to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? The ayes have it, five zero. All right, Matt, I'm going to be a piece of work and take chair prerogative.
Sure.
And because I think, John, are you here to talk about, or Lee, to talk about 56?
56, yes.
Can I let them come forward, so?
Yeah, that's really the only, one of the newest, new addition to our public hearing notice, so they're right, we're ready.
So if you could do me a favor as you speak, maybe whoever's going to do the primary speaking have the microphone closer to them and you guys.
Microphones are good.
Yes, and then you can, you know the deal, name and address that stuff. Not your first rodeo.
Identify yourself.
I'm John Lenz and Jeffrey Circle. I should be able to talk. This Article 56 was presented on the warrant at the annual town meeting this past spring. Its purpose was to modify the original Article 56, which was passed at the annual town meeting in the year 2000, to make, make the article workable. The original article, while it's been on the books for 25 years, has never been applied to any of the, any of the construction. Some other background relative to that is we found it, the original article, which was a mass historical commission incentive that it was, was applied to only about four or five other towns in the, in the state. And of all of those, nobody's ever had an application for it. It turns out it's, it's a very unworkable kind of an article. So the Historic Preservation Commission has been studying that to try to make it workable and we've been at it for a few years. We did get the article before the town, to the town meeting anyways, because it was part of the warrant.
You mean town council? Is that what you meant, John?
No, town meeting.
Okay.
It was at Aletha Yates, 37 Chasheen Road. It was presented at the last town meeting, but we had.
Pulled it.
To withdraw.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
So anyways, yeah, so it did, it did make it on the warrant, but it was, we moved it to, you know, to town meeting for an indefinite postponement. Now, the reason for the withdrawal was a concern that developed after the warrant had been printed and distributed. The concern was that the eligibility requirements may have been stated too broadly and it might be interpreted to be able to include multi-unit developments built on historic properties. And with the MBTA things, the regulations going on now, we have examples in the town. The, the concern was related to the value of the additional units and whether or not those would be included in the final valuation of the tax, when the tax benefit itself is determined. Now, many of us held the opinion that such an interpretation was already countered by the eligibility requirements as stated in the, in the article. The, however, the concern of a possibly broader interpretation could possibly incentivize a developer to test broader interpretation in the courts and possibly prevail. Such a possibility would expand the scope of the article well beyond its intended scope. The ATM article was withdrawn so we could revisit the eligibility statements clear that the tax incentive applies only to the value increase due to the renovations of the historic building as defined in the tax benefit application, Section 56.3 Application Process, and as approved by the Historic Preservation Commission or in the, or by the Historic District Commission for the properties within the historic district. The baseline for this change is the article as published for the ATM 225 warrant. The change inserts a new paragraph, section, subsection C, within Section 52, 56.2 eligible properties. And the inserted paragraph states, "The tax benefit is restricted to the value of the improvements resulting from the renovation of the historic property as described in Section 56.3 of the application process." It's proposed that going forward, that this, this article for November be exactly the same as the, as the article that was described in, in the warrant for the ATM, the ATM meeting, but with the new paragraph C inserted in the paragraph 56.2 eligible properties and retaining the other eligibility requirements as stated, other than relabeling the current C cost of rehab, rehabilitation to D cost of rehabilitation. So that's, that sums up what we have for you to consider now.
Got it. You good, Lee?
Yes.
So I'll share with you, I've chatted a bit with John, especially John on this, and I posited, well, one, thank you. I mean, there's a lot of work and the idea is to preserve homes that are, what year, 1940?
Built before January 1st, 1943.
Right, yeah. And, and the, in your mind, the super win would be someone who's in that house and they're deciding what to do with, they don't want to put the money in, but this would be an incentive to make an improvement to that home and keep a healthy housing stock.
Give them a bit of a tax break.
Bit of a tax break. And, and the idea is to that they, when, you would say, you're not losing on revenue, tax revenue, because they wouldn't do it without this incentive anyway, and eventually it'll start paying property tax. So, great idea. I had, I've been like 15 rounds with John, wondering about the, I lost, but it was kind of fun. It is, I said to myself, I think that the following situation is what I see might be prevalent, so I'm not in favor of this. I'll give the example of, my mom lived in a house in Winchester that has the same demolition kind of delay, right? And I'll just make up numbers, but let's say she sold the house to a developer for a million dollars. And the developer could not demolish the house because it was of a certain age. So they left up a couple of walls and built a house that went from 1 million to 2.4 million. And so, you know, double the tax value. And it was not like, not the great example that they gave of preserving a house, like, you know, keeping it, the housing stock for the missing middle, so to speak. It was, you're buying the house for 2.4 million, that's, you know, that's not part of the missing middle. And I think there's a great incentive for a developer to come in and take benefit of that, which is exactly what I would do, which, if I were a developer. And the, the tax benefit can get passed along to the purchaser. And I say to myself, hmm, if there are two buyers coming into Bedford, one is buying a new house, this 2.4, and the other one is buying a house that's available for this credit that goes, a house that went from a million to 2.4, they're going to get pretty, pretty decent tax credit. And I don't think they need it because they're two similarly situated people buying 2.4 million house. So I, I'm just not in favor of it. As you guys know, I have no politic interview on this point up to now, because I promised John I wouldn't, you know, try to be a jerk about it, but I do feel that it's, it's misplaced to have this go through. I would say that I think there, well, one, I don't like that it could involve like a developer pushing and it's, you know, they can be pretty tough. But I would say, I do think there's still potential to, to make this better and less of a giveaway, which would be maybe like doing a limit on the amount of credit, right? So if you go, if you have a million-dollar house, I don't know how much tax that is, let's call it 16,000, I don't know. And you, you double the value of that house, that's 16,000 extra tax is not going to be paid at least one of the years. And maybe if you just limit it to, you know, cap it, that, that could make it a little bit less of a juicy target for a developer. So anyway, those are my thoughts, right or wrong, and my interpretation, that's, that's what I've been thinking. So I hope I didn't, you know, be too abusive to it, John, because I know we've talked about it a lot.
Well, I do have some responses.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, certainly the issue of, of addressing some caps, I mean, it's something that can be considered, it'd be workable, we could, you know, could be considered. However, the example that you're having, that you give with.
Yeah.
With a developer who come in and sort of take things by right, really, we tried to cover that in the, in the section on the application process. This is a two-step kind of a process. Initially, when the, when the developer or the owner is proposing something, they have to make an application through the assessor's office.
Mm-hmm.
And they provide a detailed application package.
Mm-hmm.
Including, you know, what it is that they're intending to do. that they're intending to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then that package goes to the HPC to review for the, you know, historical connections and all. And it could approve it, okay? But the approval is an eligibility require, is an eligibility approval. We're saying that this project, as you have proposed it, meets the criteria that we're looking for, okay? And then they go ahead and they build it. The second step is that when the project is completed, the owners of the builder has to go back to the assessors, announce that the project is completed and would like to get approval for the incentive. The assessors send that information on to the HPC, and we review what was achieved and make a decision as to whether or not what was achieved corresponds to what was presented to us probably a couple of years earlier. And if that's the case, then we notify the assessors that they can then proceed with the incentive.
Yeah. So, I'll make one comment, and then I'll stop and let it go to my board members, is that if I had significant sum at issue, and I'm a developer, I'm going to look at the black and white words, and I'm going to play hardball. I'm going to play pretty tough. So, it says right there in C, located on or within the historic building. I might build a second floor that's on the historic building, you know? And, you know, I think it's, in my view, too much juicy target for being taken advantage of in or litigation, because again, if I'm a developer, black and white words, say I've done X, Y, and Z, Historic District Preservation, you guys got to do it. And so, that's it. Again, I commend you, surely, but I commend you for it, and I'm not trying to be a hater. Lee, I'm going to go to Terry after you make your comment.
Yeah, in response to your example, Paul, of a developer saving two walls and saying this is renovation, they'd only be saving $10,000, $20,000. What developer is going to go to the trouble of saving two walls just so they could get a break of $10,000 or $20,000? It's more trouble than it's worth. I think this, nobody's going to do this unless they're really keeping an old house.
Yeah. Go ahead, Terry.
I'm just wondering if this is something that, you know, could go through and we could see how it works out and then later come back if there's an issue with developers at that time. I don't know if it's, it's really not a question, but that's my thought process.
So, you're saying it could be repealed if we didn't think it was working out? Is that your thought?
Or amended? Is that something that you've thought about, or?
I haven't really thought about it, but that seems sensible.
My thinking on it is, obviously, you want to look at all these things with the idea that you can learn stuff and that might, you know, make some changes. I think the idea that, just like any other bylaw, is amendable. So, the thrust of it is, we have it.
All right.
So, that we have something we can live with, and we can make it better. We want to make sure that what we have to start with is something we can live with.
Okay.
You good, Jerry?
So, I have a couple of questions. First of all, have we gotten any inquiry about this, one? And two, in terms of this language, where did you get the language? Was it from, like, looking elsewhere and how it all worked out? And then three, I guess in terms of staff's time, you know, like, if we were to implement this, how much time? You had mentioned, John, earlier about the assessor's office, but who else will be involved in this? And in terms of, like, the benefits versus the time that staff has to be a part of? And so, I'm just trying to weigh, like, what type of benefits and how much staff time will be a part of this.
I don't anticipate that there's going to be a lot of people, a lot of applications coming in all at once. We don't have that many properties, you know, that would qualify. And I really wouldn't see it that much more unusual than the special things that the office has to do already anyways for things like processing the TIF when it comes time to do the taxes and everything. So, you also have old abatement ATB settlements that need some judgments about the disputed tax bill through the abatement process. When those decisions are made, the tax bill process has to be able to accommodate the changes that come out from all of that. Again, there's not a whole lot of them, but it is something that would disrupt, you know, the flow of the office. And there, at least when I was on the board, there was, that time disruption really wasn't very severe. The office seemed to handle it very, very well.
Also, Boba, you had asked about the wording. The original wording came from the Mass Historical Commission back in whenever this was originally done. They provided the model for making the original article, and the changes that we proposed have been reviewed by town council.
So, Lee, just to flesh out a little bit, it originally, and maybe still does if it goes through this way, had applied only, and I'm asking, I'm not telling, to houses in the Historic District Commission? And now, this is an expansion?
The
No.
No, I'm wrong on that? Okay.
The Mass Historic, this is an innovation that was proposed by the Mass Historic Society back in the late 90s.
Commission.
Commission, back in the late 90s. And their intent was to provide an incentive for houses that were already on the National Register.
Register, yeah.
To have an incentive for them to keep their properties.
But it was meant to apply to all houses in town. We mentioned the Historic District Commission because any property that applied for this that's under their authority, they would deal with it rather than us. We don't have any authority over the historic district.
So, and I'm sorry, I haven't looked at this, like, since we last spoke, John, is I had thought, I appreciated the point that it was historic register. I thought the addition was you were also adding it, and it hadn't been before, for houses in 1942 and before.
The wording in the original
No, okay.
The original wording was, houses on the register are eligible for the register.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I'm sorry. The big changes are, one, a house does not have to be on the National Register anymore. And the other is that the design guidelines don't have to comply with the ones put out by the National, I forget whoever, they were very strict and really meant for museum-grade properties, not for private homes.
Okay, so in a way, this did open up the number of houses.
It opens up the number of houses considerably.
Okay, all right, so, I was maybe half right.
You're on the right trail there.
Okay.
But I see that as very much a positive. In the time I've been on the HPC, we have a lot of demo delayed, demo applications that come through us. And we would like to encourage the developers and the owners to renovate their house rather than tear it down and put something else up.
Right.
And the problem that we would have is by the time we get to see the demo application, the house itself has been deteriorated.
There's so many houses we've lost that could have been saved with the timely renovations, you know, and we wanted to encourage that.
So, every time one of those have come before us, and I've looked at it as though this is a great thing and, you know, the demo delay thing is good, but really, it's too late. You know, if we could have offered some sort of an incentive 20 years ago, you know, 25 years ago, something like that, we got a better shot at it. My hope is that when young people are infatuated with an older home and they go and buy it, they buy it because it's probably cheaper, because it's not in as good a condition as the next door house, that they would buy it with the idea of investing in it and making a substantial renovation that's going to be with them for a number of years. And that's, we can offer that through this
Okay.
Through this article.
All right. Dan?
No questions.
And Sean?
So, I also want to thank both of you and the whole HPC for your work. And I was kind of thinking along the lines of Terry, that, you know, when I served on planning, we would do zoning bylaws because we wanted to have a certain intent. And we knew, no matter how much we studied edge cases, that something may be different, we were going to have to show up again and potentially tweak it. And I know you're actually tweaking something already, because you have something on the books that just was too restrictive, that nobody could take advantage of. So, I'm willing to give this a try and see how it works. I also, I do like what Paul mentioned about caps, and John, you mentioned you're amenable to that, so I would be fine if something got added in here saying something like, limited to 50% of the overall assessed value, just to prevent the case that you're talking about, if that sounds reasonable. Because it sounds like you wouldn't, if you were doing something more than 50% of the assessed value, you kind of were beyond rehab at that point.
I, I'm sorry, Sean, is that too late to do that at this point?
Well, our board would have to approve it for first, and we meet next on November 7th, I think. Yeah, so it's after town meeting. We don't have time to approve any changes after the special town meeting.
Just to make sure I correctly answered the question, is it a legal requirement that your board would vote on the recommendation? I mean, that would be preferable, of course, but I think an amendment now that's sort of in the spirit of the bylaw, since we're still in the public hearing process, would be okay. It can't be amended on the floor, but since it hasn't made it to the floor yet and we haven't closed the warrant yet, I mean, you might run into the issue of them not having time to review it, but I do think it could be amended, in my opinion.
Yeah. The, I would just say, again, I think it's a laudable goal. I do imagine that, again, thinking about the, I think you're in one of these houses. My guess is what, there are about 90 to 100 houses that would be, you know, that would fit into this category before 1942?
Quite a few more, I think. We have lists, and I think they're
About 100 on the, prior to 1900.
Couple hundred anyway.
And then they, 1943, we do have a couple of hundred.
Couple of hundred, okay.
And I did have, working with the former assessor, we were trying to address that particular question.
Yeah, yeah.
He did a, he pulled all of the properties, residential properties
We do have lists.
Built before 1943, with the added qualifier, that we'd want something that's, that needs to, is a target for substantial renovation. So, for that, we had him pull out not only the, built before 1943, but also their, either the grade or condition was below
Three hundred and twenty.
Three hundred and twenty, Matt says, okay. So, I'll just say this to my board members, and again, I laud the effort, and, you know, it can go through, and things will be fine. But I know if I were sitting down with a person who's 70, 75, let's say, just thinking about my mother at that time, gee, Paul, I'm going to maybe put in $200,000, $250,000 into the house to, and I'm going to get this tax benefit. Or I might just sell it. What's a better financial deal for me, Paul? Just talking finances, I'd say, sell it now, right? Because I think that, as you do, you might not get to do a full teardown because of our demo law, but you could do what I call a backhanded pseudo-tear-down, leave up something, and then build your big house that's 2. something. Developer's going to pay you a lot more for the house that, you know, when they do that. And I think that putting the 200 in or the 250 in to improve it, you're not going to, it's not going to be a return for you. Developer's only going to pay so much, right? Whether you put that 200 in it. And again, I have developer friends, I have nothing against them, but I think it's, you know, you're looking at two people who are going to buy houses in Bedford at 2.4 million. One gets a credit, one doesn't. I'm not sure why one should get the credit using this advantage. So, we just, you know, respectfully disagree, and sorry about the hard work, and we'll just see what the board thinks about it. But that's what I think. Anything else? Would you, want anything else? We'll ask the public if they have any questions, the rest of the public.
I would comment that I think even the thing with the, with a limit, is something that, we could go with what we have now, recognizing that we can make amendments to improve things. And even if we had a limit on it, we'd probably want to be able to have the option of being able to change that limit. It isn't a future amendment anyway.
Yeah, I would say, day one, if I'm a developer, I'm sending letters to everyone who's got a house that qualifies and say, I got a deal for you. But, anyway. Anyone else, any other comments? Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, anything else, Lee? I don't want to shut you off on anything.
I'd still say, any developer who was in the situation you described would just level the house. There's so much more profit to make without saving any part of the house. This is for people who love old houses and want to preserve them.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, we took, I wanted to take care of John and Lee, so I didn't make them wait forever. How else do we want to proceed with the charter and bylaws? Any specific questions that the board still might have?
Yeah, just a reminder, we were going to go through it sort of twice, once now and once again when we get to the actual town meeting warrant. So, for now, if you want to debate it, other than it's a question that you think needs to be answered during the public hearing, I would probably say, maybe focus on anyone here who asks questions, and when we're discussing it, I would probably do that later in the agenda.
Okay, opening up to anything, I think, I don't think there are any questions left on this, but
Yeah, on anything.
Does anyone have any particular things they want to bring up on the charter and bylaws? I noticed one thing, I went through and I said, aha, we pulled the stuff on 5.1, which is Town Manager Powers, but we've left in the bylaws something about the Board of Health, but I think they still want that bylaw changed.
Yes.
And I'm getting a nod from Madam Board of Health, Grand Poobah, back there, so
That was intentional.
Yeah, I was so ready to jump on that, but yes. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any issue on the proposed charter and bylaw amendments?
Can I just clarify what you had said?
Oh, that would be wonderful. John and Lee, can I have you guys move aside? Thank you again.
Thank you both.
You don't have to, Sue, but it would be giving a bad deal to the townspeople if they didn't have you up front. Oh, and I have one other thing on capital expenditures I want to ask you.
Susan Schwartz, 34, Glenridge Drive, and I was on the Board of Health. And the way, and I'm speaking for myself
Yep.
On this, the way I interpreted you leaving that bylaw change in is it's a clarification.
Yes.
It wasn't a substantial change, and I think that's why we didn't look at it any differently, even though you pulled the other part.
Thank you, thank you. My, that's it, thanks, Sue. My other question is, I think we had on the capital expenditures, put that in the bucket of maybe clarifying, and I just don't want to raise a red cape with anyone on capital expenditures, because they might say, wait a minute, that's substantive.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to move it. I don't have strong references. Unless, if they all said they're fully supportive of it, we could
There was a little bit of, it wasn't quite like
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
I'm happy to move it.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And there was no one online?
Oh, yeah, good one. Almost got away with it this time. Anyone online? No?
We closed the public hearing.
And we're good with closing the public hearing now? Okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, for your patience on all of this. All of this, this was quite exciting. Okay. All right, okay, moving on. That was charter and bylaw. Board and committee interview, aha. Angela Rivera-Dick. Aha, oh, hi Angela. Thank you. I should have let you jump the, I apologize, but anyway, tell us what committee you're here for and why you want to be on it.
Sure. First of all, thank you for allowing you to speak today.
Of course.
This is the first time I'm attending one of these meetings. I've got two small kids and it gets a little difficult to try and come, so.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of that, my husband is out of town, so my children are at home doing their homework.
Are they watching you?
They're not watching me and they're probably not doing their homework.
I know your girls, they might be doing both.
I don't know. After this, I'm going to have to transition out, but anyway, thank you for having me here.
They're not watching, kids never want to watch their parents because they're afraid you're going to be embarrassing or something.
Probably.
That's how children roll.
I mean, I threaten to be embarrassing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm really interested in joining the River Stewardship Council. Its mission, you know, protecting our waters and connecting with the community. It is congruent with my values professionally and personally. My background is in community psychology. Most of my career has been working with underserved populations. I've worked with children going through the juvenile justice system. And most of my career now has been working with veterans. So I've been thinking about ways to give back to the town. And I was actually extremely lucky and grateful. I, you know, we lived on 36 Meadowbrook Road, but then recently moved into 22 Lido Lane, where Gordon Feldman lived. And he was, you know, the leader in protecting our mill.
Wow.
That's just a road from us. And I really found out a lot about him by not just living in his house, but walking down there with my daughter. We'd go there almost every day. And I saw a plaque with his name. I'm like, wait a second, I need to do research, like this is the person that built the house that I'm in. So I did research and just saw all of the wonderful work that he did with people in the community to make that mill a nationally recognized historic site now.
So I'll pause you there. I confess I've never been, so give me the elevator speech while you should go.
It's beautiful. I go there with my daughter. This was just from a couple hours ago when the rain stopped.
Okay, that looks pretty good.
It's beautiful.
It was old.
That's crazy, wow.
I have been there.
So, oh, you're trying to make me look bad, Sean? I know how you.
So, it's like very interesting. Basically, you know, there's a waterway there and the mill, basically the, you just have like the kind of remnants of the mill there. The mill, I think, barely survived like two fires and now I think you just have the foundation. And so what Gordon did was he advocated for and got a committee together to protect that area, to preserve it, to create a bridge so that people can walk over and see the water, the stream that goes through there. There's, on one side, there's a pond, on the other side, it's the, is it the vine land? It's the.
Well, Dan might know.
I'm forgetting.
Apparently not.
Sorry.
In all his visits.
Bottom line is, it's a beautiful site.
I'll stop.
It's a beautiful site.
You can't stop, sir.
And, you know, my daughter loves going there and she, you know, likes catching minnows and things like that. And so it just, I don't know, like, maybe it's kind of courting, but like, the wheels were turning and I learned about who he was. And I also, you know, my family's from Portugal, we're very like connected to the water.
Right.
Actually just came back from there two days ago, so I'm very like.
Nice.
Settled.
Oh, sorry.
Probably not speaking, you know, most eloquently, but yeah, I mean, I really just want to connect with something that's important to me for two reasons.
That's perfect, Angela. I'm going to go to Dan for questions.
I know Angela pretty well, she's an amazing person and mom, we'd be lucky to have her, so thank you for volunteering for serving this committee.
Thank you.
Done?
Yeah, thank you for volunteering. The River Stewardship Council is very important and I love your reasons for wanting to do it, so thank you.
And Bopa?
Me too, I just love your story. Thank you for sharing such a perfect connection and thank you for volunteering.
And Terry?
I'd like to echo what my colleague said, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we're ready for a motion. I think we'll let Dan make it.
I move the select board appoint Angela Rivera-Dick to the River Stewardship Council for a three-year term as an alternate ending June 30, 2028, and authorize the town manager to sign letters on behalf of the select board to this effect.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any nays? The ayes have it, five zero. So you will get a letter from the town manager and you will take that nice letter to the town clerk's office, she will swear you in, and then you have to take some tests to make sure you're ethical and you'll be able to pass that. And, you know, just a few things like open meeting law, when you get emails, don't reply to all, if you even have that option. Basically, the work of all our committees and boards should be done in the meetings. And there's some exceptions to that, but that's kind of the general rule.
The VA has trained me well, but I will definitely go back to those rules for sure.
Have fun. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, DPW. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a couple items tonight. First is a contract with Woodard and Curran for $125,000 related to our MS4 system. MS4 is, stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It's related to the town's stormwater management plan. The plan is available on the DPW webpage, and I encourage people, if you have a few minutes, to take a look. We also have an email address on there. It's gone to fair amount of use. It's stormwater@bedfordma.gov. It's an opportunity for folks who have questions or concerns about coverts or stream issues or our ponds and lakes and stormwater related to it, to ask, and then we have our engineering group monitor that and respond back. So this contract is for $125,000. It's for consulting services related to staying in compliance with our MS4 permit. It's with Woodard and Curran, they've been our consultant for the last few years, been very happy with their work, and we look forward to working with them for a few more years. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Sean?
Yeah, so looking at the contract, I get the idea of illicit discharge detection and compliance assistance, but it talks about advancing previously identified phosphorus source reduction opportunities. And then it talks about what it's going to do, but I'm curious, you know, what's the issue there and what is the benefit from doing that?
So absolutely, phosphorus is a consideration for us. If we think of phosphorus in our lawns as making things grow, when it gets into the water, it continues to make things grow. And so Fawn Lake, phosphorus gets in, the algae, the plants that are in there, it's not in balance with our goals of the use. So how we deal with phosphorus sources to keep them out of the water, it's basically tackling at the source level to keep them out of our water sources, our water system.
Okay, thank you.
Dan? Actually, I just have a question not related to the contract.
Sure.
Yeah, I've read about phosphorus and, is that a, only, I think I know the answer, but is that only a problem if you're fertilizing your lawn and you live right next to Fawn Lake? Or, you know, if you're a half mile away and you're fertilizing your lawn with phosphorus, is that leach in even from that half mile away?
That's a great question. I don't know.
Don't know.
I can get you an answer. I think for us, part of it is raising awareness about the paths that the stormwater takes. Once it leaves a road and gets in a pipe, it can easily travel half a mile, three quarters of a mile to El Brook to, you know, to wherever it might go.
I don't, I don't think I need an answer. That sounds like Google AI to me, as opposed to asking you to do something. Bopa?
My question is about the completion date. The memo says June 30, 2027, but the contract says 26. Is it 26 or 27 for the completion?
That's a great point. It should be 26. This is a one-year contract.
Okay.
To come back.
And it would start right away?
Right away, correct.
That's all I have.
Be good. And Terry?
I've read the proposal and the memo. I don't have any questions.
All right, super. Do we have a motion?
I'll make this one. I move that the board approve the contract with Woodward and Curran in the amount of $125,000, as described in the Public Works Memo dated September 5, 2025, and that the select board authorize the town manager to sign on their behalf.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
Great, our second item is just a very brief fall update on Public Works activities. Many of you traveled Burlington Road, Route 62, have seen some of the work there. The work is complete for the season, so over the next couple of weeks, we will be paving that to smooth out the road for the winter. So a number of people have raised that, so just wanted to get that off the table right away. We're going to be coming before the board in the next month or so related to some housekeeping and some general updates to the traffic rules and regulations. We have a few situations in town where we just need to more closely coordinate some of our signage, and then we are also working on some additional signage in a few areas as well. The big news is, a year ago, I was before the board to talk about lead pipes in our water system. Over the last year, we've put our model together, we've done over 300 test bits, and we have found zero lead.
Yay.
So no lead service line, no lead in people's houses, no lead solder, no lead, zero. So that's very good for our model overall.
Is that a surprise or is that expected?
We had no records of lead, but you're never sure where we're going to find it.
But you mentioned in the houses too, you were able to detect that?
I should clarify, we measure to the house.
Okay.
To the house, yes. So, thank you, I should clarify that. Our model is such that if a house was part of a subdivision and the house to the left and the house to the right were tested and they were all built at the same time, statistically there's a 0% chance that your house has it as well. So our model has tested 700 of 900 areas, so we still have some testing left to do. But with our record as it is, we continue to be hopeful that we will not find any lead in the system. We also are going to be doing a special collection event this Saturday for latex paint, and there's still lots of spots if people want to drop off materials. It's at the Collection Center, 108 Carlisle, Saturday 9 to 12. You do have to sign up online, so if you go to Public Works, to the Special Collection Event webpage, you can sign up for that. I bring it up because also, Health Department is working with Lexington Saturday for hazardous household waste. So if you have oil-based paint, you want to go to Lexington. If it's latex paint, you can sign up for Bedford's program.
Got it.
So the good news is, if you come to us and it's oil, we'll send you to Lexington.
Question for you. So I have, oh, I don't, this is hypothetical, but I have like five half-full latex gallon things, right? Can I like consolidate and then, so I have like two empty ones, I'm not sure about the math, but let's say it's two. Can I just let those like dry out and throw them in regular rubbish? Or do I have to bring the empty can to you guys?
So an empty can is acceptable to go in the rubbish. We encourage consolidation, we'll accept any color, even mixed colors, so whatever works for you.
Okay, super, thank you.
This is starting to sound like a word problem.
I know, yeah, really, I was getting anxious.
Show your work.
Yeah. Anything else for us, Dave?
That was it, no, thank you.
Any, any questions from the board?
No.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, now we go to Erin Dore and Amy Fidalgo, CPA, warrant article presentation.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Erin Dore, Dunster Road. Sitting in front of you is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee tonight. We are bringing in front of you two articles for recommendation to the special town warrant. The presentation we have is going to feel pretty similar to how we usually start. So the first article that we have is the surcharge. That is, every year since Bedford has adopted the CPA Community Preservation Act, town meeting has been given the opportunity to affirm or change the CPA surcharge. This is at 3%, which is the, it allows us to have the maximum match from the state of Massachusetts, which has ranged everywhere from almost 100% down to this year at 24%, which I think we can all agree at any rate of return is pretty awesome. It's a great bang for your buck in the town of Bedford. What CPA funds can be used for is affordable housing. Oh, you can actually see, yeah. So this shows what the match has varied at in prior years. There is no guarantee on the match, but we've been really fortunate with quite high numbers there. CPA funds can be used for things in the category of affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, recreation, and administration. What it looks like for a traditional, or kind of the average resident, if we scroll down a little bit, okay.
We simplified this presentation.
Yes.
We tried to make it easier. Sean normally goes into the detail of town meeting.
Okay.
But the average resident has a reasonably small CPA surcharge in the whole year.
Yes.
Right.
If you'd like, I can go through those numbers, but we don't need to. So there are exemptions for people who may qualify for them, seniors and non-señors. That's all going to be talked more about in the special town meeting, but you can also find it on the Community Preservation section of our website for the town. The, yeah, so Article 2 is just recommitting to the 3%. CPA, CPC does recommend approval of that. And the Article 3 is the only project that's on for a special town warrant this round. It is for the appropriation of $675,000 for a multipurpose pavilion. And in 2024, you appropriated funds for the design of that. We've been really happy with the design that Lemon Brook has offered us, and we've had many meetings that have included landscape design, hardscape, lighting, sound, ADA compliance. And this is going to be sitting in the totlot area between totlot and Kids Club, right here off the campus. It is open for cultural events and music performances and a general, you know, shade for people who want to have parties or events at the totlot. Kind of could be a hangout place for students in between school and sports, so we expect it to be heavily used, and we've been really pleased with the design so far. If you have any questions about that, we can answer any of that, but the build would go through 2026 calendar year and be ready in time for the tricentennial. Opened by 2027?
Yes, yeah. The structure itself is prefab, and then obviously the landscaping and all of the features around it, we will incorporate ourselves.
Very good. Anything else before we go to questions, if any?
No, that is it.
Okay.
We recommend, CPC does recommend approval of that, so.
Yes. Gary, do you have any questions?
I do not, no.
Bopa?
My only question is, I'm sure I should know this, but what determines the percentage of the match? Because every year is different. And.
A few things go into that. The number of communities that are actively participating, what they're putting into that CPA bucket.
So I get it. And then there's some lobbying that goes.
Yeah, and then also whatever the community itself chooses as their surcharge. So let's say our surcharge was 1%, we would receive less of a match from the state. So it's a combination of the community's surcharge and then how many other communities commit throughout the state.
So is it, I'm probably, this is wrong.
The only reason why our match is going down is because other communities.
Right.
Have.
Right, and then at one point, my, I think I saw like 100% because we were the only one and we were the first. Yep, okay.
And the state did commit that other communities, they had enough funds that they just committed 100% even though other communities were joining as well.
Okay. And is there a certain time that we would know by what the match would be?
Yes, we know usually by the end of year.
Got it, okay.
And these are also generally the source of this, or real estate fees that haven't been increased in eons, and then typically, what happens is in some of the higher years, the legislature bumps it from some other fund. But there's, I know a push with so many towns now to increase those real estate fees because they've been stagnant.
And what typically happens is, in the 11th hour, you know, they will announce that they're cutting, you know, the entire, uh, budget for CPA from all communities, and then we'll add it back in. So, oftentimes, that will be kind of like the last minute thing, that communities will get scared, they'll be no match. Um, but we budget very conservatively. In the upcoming cycle, I'll be budgeting an 18% match, um, because the last round, although it's not shown on this chart, um, our match was 20-point something. Um, it's not shown on this chart, just because we haven't finished collecting, uh, the current fiscal year that we're in, and we finished collecting 2026 before we showed on this match, because it won't actually all calculate, because you base your match off of the current year you're in, if that makes sense. So, we need to finish FY '26 before we show all of 25 on this chart.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I lost track, are there any other questions from the board?
Um, is there gonna be sound, or just electric, like speakers?
Good, thank you.
There is electric.
Yeah.
Um, we are not doing, yeah, it, it's sound accessible. You can, whoever is renting out that space, or, or using that space can bring in the...
So, we're not purchasing sound-combing speakers?
We are not.
Are we buying the chairs? That's his last, they're aspirational Adirondacks, or are we gonna actually buy chairs, which kids will destroy what's happening?
We cannot buy anything that is non-permanent with CPA funds, but we will absolutely be putting furniture with other funds. And we actually purchased, um, tables and chairs for the recent Beer Garden event. So, our plan is like, once this is in place, we have some furniture available as the immediate, you know, option, and we will certainly be, uh, happy to put out more attractive options if that's not enough, or if we want a different, uh, set of Adirondack chairs. We can, we can make that come to life.
Just seeing the lifecycle of Adirondacks, which, that's a little bit short, given the teenagers that run by.
Yep.
We're gonna stash the stuff when it's not being used from the town gall building attic, or what's the story?
The facilities department manages.
Erin's office, Erin's office, great.
The new VA garage.
Perfect, yes. How about the dog park? Just kidding, sorry. Da, 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 thank you, it's very exciting.
Okay, um, I don't think there are any other questions. Are we making a motion on this now, or is that, when do we go over the warrant?
I think I'm just presenting, and then you can couple that into your warrant.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, now we get to the solar panels. Uh, approve addition of rooftop solar as part of the new fire station construction.
Ron Scaltrito, we do have Ron Scaltrito.
There was some debate about him.
And Erin Dorr is still here. Hey, Ron, can you hear us?
Yeah, um, you're muted, so I'm just gonna go ahead and get started, if that's okay. Um, oh, I think he just unmuted. Ron, can you say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes. So, um, we've discussed solar on a few different occasions, in and out of the warrant now, and we have, um, a number of slides here from Select Energy, who works with Power Options, works closely with the Facilities Department, um, both Ron and Erin. Um, we're not going to go through this whole, um, PowerPoint on their behalf, but, um, I asked for this so you could get some more information specific to the fire station, and then later on, when we get to the warrant article for solar, we have some of the rooftop pictures in here. Um, but most importantly, this is the type of presentation that we'll receive when we have the rest of the rooftop quotes, and we wanna compare, um, some of our rooftop options versus our canopy options and things like that. You'll be getting this full rundown, we'll have Power Options and Select Heat to answer all of the questions. Um, you know, as of right now, all that's before us is specifically, um, a vote to incorporate solar panels into the fire station, and then we have some of the information after we take that vote, um, in this PowerPoint related to the town meeting warrant for the Davis School and the DPW article. So, um, the, the financial numbers are in here. I already talked at the last meeting about the return on investment for a few of these projects, um, the fire station return on investment, I can pull that up as a reminder to folks. Um, oop, sorry, my, uh, ability keeps lugging out. And then I'll see if Ron or Erin wanna add anything. Just gonna hop down to the fire station. Here's a preliminary, the preliminary design overhead view of the fire station. Um, this has been sent to our design team to work directly with Power Options, or, excuse me, Select Energy. Um, so the architects and engineers can work the mounting into the roof design, and we could get a change order done to get that incorporated into the current construction. Expected to be a 50 kilowatt, um, hour capacity, and here we go. Purchase cash flow and return on investment, 6.6 years, if we receive the 30% ITC, which means that would be the return on investment if we get the project completed before the end of 2027, um, which is a great return on investment. We have all the numbers here, I'm not gonna go through them in great detail, but I think might make more sense to open it up to Ron and Erin, and just questions that the board has.
Okay, um, a- anything further you wanna speak to in the, the fire station roof, Ron, or Erin?
Uh, for me, no, it, it's, it's pretty straightforward on, on, you know, what the design is, what, what the cash value is, like Matt said, this is about six years, then we get a, you know, return on investment on, so that, that's great, you don't see that that often in, in, in projects like this, so...
Yeah, no...
It's up to the, uh, up to the architect to, to make sure that what they're proposing fits on the, to be attached the proper way.
From an aesthetic standpoint, um, it doesn't, it's...
Erin, do you, do you mind coming up? Thank you, Dan.
From an aesthetic standpoint, uh, the solar panels should not be viewable from the street side, so it shouldn't affect the historic nature of the...
Got it, so that means you didn't, we didn't even have to go forward to the HDC on these?
Um, I think when we get the final design, we'll, we'll take another look at it.
Yep.
Um, and then we'll make...
Talk to them, maybe, okay, all right.
But I know that that's just a question in the...
Yep, okay. Um, anything from the board, any questions?
Yeah, so, the motion talks about a change order. Now, may I correct, that the design of the fire station already included the idea of solar, right? So, is the change order just for the actual placing of the panels, or how does that work?
Um, the, the, that language was really just meant to clarify that we're going to be pulling from our existing funding authorization, and we're not asking for additional money, and it's going to be incorporated into the fire station project. Um, this vote is really just memorializing from the board that the, the overall price is gonna go up slightly, um, and so we're gonna have the same vote of CapEx and a vote of this board, just because the number's now gonna be a little different than what was approved at town meeting, but we don't need additional town meeting action. Um, that's really all it's meant by a change order. We're still gonna go through a, a procurement process, but it is a, they have approved pricing and a state bid list and things like that. Um, so it's really a project change, maybe more than a change order, if that's what's...
Yeah, that, that makes sense, that threw me off a bit at the beginning, but, okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
I think that's a new one, I've probably forgotten. Um, so with the rooftop panels, are we selling Eversource energy and then getting a rebate? How, how is it gonna work financially for us?
We would own these outright.
Yep.
And therefore, we capture 100% of what is created from energy.
And does the surrounding grid have the capacity to accommodate this project?
Yes, they do, yes.
Excellent news.
Very good, thank you, Dan.
And how long have they been saying this will take? Cause Eversource takes forever with these projects.
We get in the queue.
Yep.
And, um, Select is confident that we can get these on, like, on rooftops in, in the appropriate time to capture the, uh, incentives that are coming close to fruition through the Big Beautiful Bill. So, 2026, yes, through 2026. And obviously, the fire station will be later than that, but for Davis and, uh, DPW, we can get these through, through 2026.
By the way, this might be too much, is, um, so this is the 30% investment tax credit. Um, presumably, somehow in all of this, someone's buying that credit from us, right? Cause I mean, we don't pay income taxes at town.
That's a question from Paul Segre now.
I, I think that's got to be it, that somehow, it's, the pricing is net.
I think we prob, we probably all pay for that benefit through our own taxes federally and everything like that, but...
Yeah, no, wait, okay, all right. Um, I think that's it. Um, do we need a motion, or?
I'll move.
You drafted one?
Yeah.
I think we're getting one, Terrence.
I move that the board authorizes a change order to incorporate rooftop solar into the current fire station construction project at 139 The Great Road.
Second.
Uh, the second goes to BOPA. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Pass, it's zero, excellent. Thank you for all your hard work, Ron, Erin, everyone else, success has many fathers and mothers, so, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, uh, special town meeting warrant.
So, I sent the board an email with a few minor changes to the warrant. We pulled, um, a few citizen petitions off, and so, this evening, we're gonna officially vote to place the articles, um, so, sorry.
Didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, yeah, um...
The citizens petitions, are they just not, do you know they're not coming, or does, don't they have until today, right?
Yeah, I mean, so they haven't, they haven't come in today, I mean, unless somebody's waiting outside. So, we're gonna, we're gonna be closing the warrant tonight, so it is officially...
Okay.
Done, yeah.
And they, they were given a, a soft deadline of several weeks ago, and we haven't heard since, so...
Okay, fair enough, um, do we, uh, wha, wha...
Uh, us, to save on motions tonight, um, if we wanted to just take one of my last points first, 55 The Great Road Future Use Planning and Design Funding. Um, we have about $30,000 within the operating budget and Select Board Professional Services for, for small projects and things that come up. I don't anticipate, um, we're gonna be spending more than that between now and June 30th. Um, so, I'd rather just plan on utilizing that funding for any of our additional assessments that we do, um, in the spring and summer, and then put a annual town meeting warrant article on for funding appropriation, so, um, this was meant to sort of kickstart the planning efforts, and we still wanna do that next month. Um, but as far as requesting the funding, I hate to ask for funding now that we're not actually gonna need till next fiscal year if we have money within the operating budget. Um, we have a few articles we can, um, look to turn back, so I was just gonna recommend pulling this article and using the funding we already have in the operating budget, and...
Okay.
By the annual town meeting, we'll probably have a better idea of how much we might actually need over the next year as well. This was really sort of a placeholder ballpark, cause we haven't started the design work yet. If we pull that article, we could make a motion to place all of the other articles, and that way, as we go through and do the, um, review and explanations, we're only making our recommendations. Otherwise, you're gonna have to place and recommend, which gets a little clunky.
I'm sorry, I'm not thinking very well tonight, say that again?
I'm recommending the board place Articles 1 through 14 on the warrant.
Okay.
That way, when you make your recommendations, you're just making recommendations.
Oh, okay, yeah, I agree, yeah, yes.
So, I'll make a motion to place Articles 1 and 14 on the warrant as described.
Through 14, right?
One through 14.
Yep.
Second. Described in the...
So, can I ask you before, there's a second, is, um, what number is the, um, tax credit?
That's 14.
Yeah, that's Article 14.
Oh, the tip or the tax credit?
The, no, the...
Yeah, no, 14, 14 is it, and, God bless you, is, um, I'm gonna do basically the, effectively a hold on that. I, I, I think I'd like to see it come back some other time with some consideration of a, um, cap on it, because I'm afraid that, um, if we put it on, um, you know, I'm, I'm usually, uh, predisposed to put stuff on, and, you know, it's town meeting's choice, but I, 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 I think it's, uh, a lot of inside baseball on this, and, and I think it's, yeah, it's complicated, and I think it needs more work, including thought on a cap. So, I would ask, can you make it 1 through 13, and then we can do 14 separately? Or we can do 14 separately, and, or whatever?
Yeah, and, I mean, yeah, I have my ideas on 14, but since we're gonna talk about it, I will amend that motion to be 1 for 13.
Thank you.
113.
Yeah, I think it just make it easier.
Yeah.
Um, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second from Terry, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, any nays? The ayes have it, 1 through 13. Sean, what do you think on, uh, I already said what he said on 14, what, what's your thinking?
I mean, I'm inclined to place it, because I think, I know they've waited before, um, they've been working on it for a while. Um, I'd place it with the limit that I proposed, and then we can, you know, see how it works out, and we can always amend it later, but I wouldn't be inclined to ask them to come back at annual town meeting, because I know, I, I don't think that would be fair to them, especially since they have already funded one town meeting.
So, I, I would say, you know, all of this obviously is respectfully, is that, you know, it's not so much fairness to them, but rather getting it right, right? And, um, I, uh, let me see, so, there's that, and, and I think that, um, super well-intended, I think the magnitude of potential tax benefit that would, uh, go away or be, you know, given to, to folks is pretty high, and that to put that on the HPC, I think is just too much, right? In other words, uh, it's a juicy, it's, it's a nice, it's a really good tax benefit, and, and I think it would, it could potentially, and it could be wrong, um, animate folks to go at it hard in a way we don't like, in, in, in a litigious manner, such that, do we really wanna invite that, especially when we have, we're gonna have some, a few tough budget years coming up, uh, you know, I think we'll squeak through 2027, the next, you know, fiscal year, but do we need to be giving away, um, tax benefits, uh, right now at this point? So, anyway, that, that's the best I can do, and, you know, the way, the vote goes, the way it goes, but I, I, I think we should, uh, fine-tune it for...
Yeah, and I would offer, I mean, first of all, I do wanna get it right, too.
Yeah.
I mean that we do it just because they're coming back a second.
I know you didn't mean that.
Yeah, and, um, I'll also observe that any tax revenue that may be not collected in the future because of this is not tax revenue that's being collected currently, so it's not like we're losing, we would be losing money, it would be, we wouldn't potentially gain money that we could have gained.
See, that, that's where I actually really don't agree with that premise, because if you have houses built in 19, uh, 1940 house, right? I, I don't think the, the, um, situation that they posited, someone's like, oh, maybe they put 200, 250 in, when, i- i- that is going to happen. I think, uh, folks are in that position, their kids are gonna say, you're throwing away 200 grand because, uh, the developer's gonna come five years later and offer you X for it, you're not gonna benefit from that 200, so I, uh, that, that you put into it, right? So, I think we're losing, uh, anyway, that house is gonna be turned in, let's say, five years out from now with the developer, and they're gonna capture that benefit. I don't think, I honestly don't think we're gonna get their, their, their typical thing, so, um, I understand that point, and they build it as such, and I think they, you know, earnestly believe it, and that might be right, but I think, a- as between the two possible choices, had my mother come to me with, Paul, I'm gonna put in 200, 250 into this, oh, and gee ways, we get a tax credit, see, that nice mum, but, uh, you know, that's a bad investment, and, and I think many people would think of it that way, so, anyway, just you're right or wrong, that's the way I think it would roll.
I, I don't see people selling their houses because of this. I think if they were going to sell to a developer, they, you know, they would sell to a developer, but, I mean, what did Matt say, 300 houses?
Correct.
So, 320, so, I mean, where I'm coming from is, I, you're not gonna put this on and have all 320 properties be turned over. You may, I mean, how often do people sell their houses? They may be looking, even if there is a run on this, it may be talking like, you know, 10 or 15 houses in the first year or so.
If, if that's the case, that's not the greatest magnitude, but, anyway, I, I said my piece, I, you know, so, I, I, why, do you wanna just go ahead and make a motion to put it on? I'm gonna vote against it, but we're just, unless anyone else has... So I, I, why, do you wanna just go ahead and make a motion to put it on? I'm gonna vote against it, but we'll just, unless anyone else has.
I don't think.
I would tend to, um, agree with Sean. I don't, I don't think it's gonna have that big effect, and I think if it does, it's something that maybe we could revisit later, but, um, it, it sounds like it's something that may help people keep their properties, um, current, and so.
Okay, thank you. BOPA?
I do, um, agree with you to have a cap, and I do, I would rather, um, you know, I know how you're saying it, it's not, uh, what, but I'd rather wait to do it correctly.
And Dan, do you have anything?
Uh, I'm pro cap. I also think that this will probably be used so, so, so infrequently, no matter what we expect and hope it's gonna happen. That's my experience with all these changes to our zoning and bylaws for any kind of element. So, I mean, I'm happy to say yes. I just don't think it'll have any impact whatsoever on the tax base moving forward.
Okay. So Sean, do you wanna go ahead and make the motion?
Sure. So I, the motion is to place.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
I move that we place Article fourteen, the Article fifty-six tax deferral for renovated historic properties, on the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Nays? Nay?
Nay.
I pass this three to two. Okay. Um, very good. Um, moving forward, what else do we have? Matt on this?
So, uh, Article one, uh, we'll need a motion to, uh, recommend Article one, and then who is going to be the presenter or the speaker on behalf of that? I'll ask you the same question on each article.
What's, anything that is traditional for the chair, which is, yeah, okay, so, um, so I will do that. Um.
We want a recommendation as well, right, Matt? I move that we recommend Article one.
Um, second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, passes five zero, and it's Paul. Okay. Matt, are you gonna send around who gets these, so I don't have to keep track?
Yeah, I'm keeping track.
Yeah, okay. Uh, number two?
Tiff.
Tiff. Um.
I move the approve Article two.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Passes five zero, and motion to recommend or not?
I move that we recommend passage of Article two.
Can we have a second? Um, second goes to, I should make it, I should, I'm gonna have them all go to the same person, so it's easier for the note taker, if that's okay? You don't like that, do you?
Um, I, can we just go to Article two twice?
Yeah.
No, now this is a recommendation, right? We want, oh my good lord.
I, I already approve the recommendation.
You're right. You're right. You're right. Yeah, no.
What's tonight?
And I just need a speaker for Article two.
I can do that.
Ooh.
I'm not gonna be here. Sorry. I'm number third. Late breaking news.
Got it. Okay. You could just claim COVID like some people do.
Well, yeah, I could, but.
I, I was not. But I, that was legit. Okay.
It's an idea, which made me very excited.
Yes. Number three. And we're doing recommendations.
I move that we recommend Article three.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, beautiful.
I think that's logical for me to do that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. The note is not Paul. Okay. Uh, four, uh, we're gonna, Sean?
I, I move that we recommend approval of Article four.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, passes five zero, and Sean gets that again. We're up to five. Um.
So do we wanna have some discussion about this one, or?
So, uh, yeah, a little bit. I'm, I'm, I wanna explain my, why I'm not gonna recommend.
Yeah, 'cause I figured there's some thoughts.
My, uh, I'll keep it short, which is almost impossible for me. One is, I do think it's complicated. Maybe I'm a dimwit, but it is somewhat complicated to me. Two is that, um, I boil it down to the following, is, I would almost rather see, this is a way, to me, of having a runoff, but in the first election. And I, I think I'd almost rather, if, if we'd had a situation where one select board positioned up and no one got fifty percent, the top two go to a runoff. And, and, um, you know, as opposed to the ranked choice voting. It's just for me, that's the way I'm absorbing it, so that's, um, do you want me to repeat that?
No, we have a little, a little bit demon possession there on the, uh.
I thought it was because you're like, yeah, I'm sorry to call you all Piper, that was wrong of me. Um, the, so anyway, that's my thinking on it, right or wrong. Um, I'm not hating on it. I, I admire the folks for coming forward. And that's it. Yeah, okay.
I mean.
I'll offer a couple thoughts. Um, I mean, first of all, you're right about the runoff. In fact, some versions of these are called instant runoff.
Mm-hmm.
I am in favor of ranked choice voting. I think it makes sense in a lot of ways. It allows the voters to give more information. It, I think encourages people to run, 'cause they're avoiding the spoiler effect. But a couple things to keep in mind here. For one, this is part one, and as written in the article, if this is approved, it would go to the town, election ballot. So because the town, um, when this was a statewide referendum, back, I don't know what year it was, but it, it actually was a majority vote in favor in Bedford for that, statewide. But I feel like, you know, even independent of my own being in favor of ranked choice voting, that because Bedford has historically been in favor of it, because this is something that by its very definition affects every voter, you know, I wouldn't necessarily feel like we should pass everything to town election if it was some inner-town government thing. But this affects everybody. I think we should support this so that the voters can decide in March.
Okay, yeah, fair points. Um, and I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, I think, as I said when it came, I, I appreciate the effort. I, I'm against it for many reasons, which I articulated last time, and some reasons are articulated. It is confusing. It does produce unintended consequences and unforeseen consequences, um, and I am not in favor of it, so I'll be voting no on this, uh, to put in the warrant.
Okay. Uh, BOPA, do you have, can I have any comments?
I'm in favor.
Okay. All right. Um, and Terry?
Um, in general, I'm in favor of it. It is confusing, and in Bedford, we don't have a lot of, usually a lot of contested races. But I agree with Sean. I think it's something we should pass along to the voters.
Right. Um, Sean, I'll ask you to make the motion.
So I'll move that we recommend approval of Article five.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Paul's a nay, and, okay. So passes three to two. Very good. Um.
Articles? I'm assuming, Sean, would you make?
Yeah, so as far as the, the speakers, so I know the group, uh, Manalik Kondo and Ethan Strominger want to give a presentation on this. And I, I think that's fair, they're the driving people. I would be glad to give sort of the introductory select board, um, you know, this is our discussion on this, like, or this is what it means, and then turn it over to them.
That's, that sounds great.
I mean, it's similar to what was done for the specialized code, where I think, Dan, you gave the presentation, and Margot just sort of introduced it.
And do, do we know, I know we have the town moderator here, but did, um, would the anticipation be that they speak from just, you know, the audience and do whatever the time has allotted, or?
Yeah, I, I told them they would have no more than ten minutes, so they're gonna shorten their presentation a bit, but I did not give them a microphone placement, whether they could kind of come up or go from the mic, so.
My interpretation is Article, I think Article one will, will carry the day, and so the presentation is ten minutes.
So they could come up to where the other.
Well, yeah, anyone can come to the front speaker, and absolutely, and you could invite them to continue your select board recommendation.
Okay, okay. All right. So it sounds like people will be happy. That's fair. Okay, great. And, and so you're kinda on the hook to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Light lift.
Yeah, yeah, this would be relative.
Yeah, okay. Um, six, um, and seven are the rodenticide ones, um, and bef, well, let's vote on them.
Recommendation. Yep.
And then we'll talk about who presents. Um, Sean, do you wanna make a motion?
So are we moving both of them together?
Let's do it both together.
Okay, so I move that the select board recommends approval of Article six and Article seven.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it, and I will, um, separately speak with, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee, Ben Thomas, who has been the champion. Whether he wants to speak to it, or I would be honored if he, uh, asked me to speak on it as well. So either way, he and I will, uh, work it out. Does that sound fair, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I have a draft presentation to be able to.
Okay, whatever. We'll, we'll, we'll work it out, but, um, whatever you'd like is, I mean, it's.
It's gonna be boiled down to what's the best I was getting to pass, that's what I care about.
Okay, yeah. Um, the, uh, very good. Thank, and thank you for that. Um, okay, so now we go to eight.
Nine, oh, eight.
Eight. Uh, Davis School and DPW Solar.
So I'll move that the select board recommend approval of Article eight.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Um, does anyone want this?
I'm, I'm a rookie, so give me whatever.
All yours. Terry? I think Terry will be great at it. I think not Paul will be great at it. The, um, nine, uh, collective bargaining, um, recommendation?
I move to approve Article nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, I, you know, I think I heard Sean make the motion. Do you wanna make it? Easy for the, um.
Sean makes it.
It sounded slightly, it was really weird, yeah, yeah, second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Do it, do it.
Yeah. Again, the whole intent is to make it easier on the note taker. Um, the, um.
We need someone to.
So.
Give the recommendation on that.
I'm happy to do that, um, unless, you know.
Are you gonna do the charter and bylaws?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do the charter and bylaw, yes.
So I can do that.
Yeah, why don't you do nine? Okay, Article ten.
Do we wanna just move all the charter and bylaws, eleven?
I, I think so. Yeah.
Good idea.
So, I move the select board recommend approval of Articles ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, and thank you to everyone who worked on the Charter and Bylaw Commission. Um, it was a great committee.
Thank you for.
It's been five years.
It was fun. I learned a lot. Um, yeah, it's always nice being on a new committee, uh, meeting new people too. I mean, I didn't know Armin Zilgen, for example, or, you know, others, so it was fun. Yeah.
So you're gonna do that?
Uh, yeah, I will do that. Uh, Article fourteen, uh, the tax deferral.
I move the select board recommend approval of Article fourteen.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, oh, hold on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, not just procedural. I'm a little confused. So I recall that when you placed this, it was talked about adding a cap, okay? And that was important for some of you, but I don't feel like what you're approving now includes that cap anywhere yet. And once this is placed on the warrant, you can't make any further changes, I think, later on, right? So, did, did you intend to add a cap to the language of change?
I'd like to add a, so can I unplace it so that we can add a cap?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I move that we unplace Article fourteen.
Second.
What, just help me understand what that means.
The moderator's pointing out is that.
No, no, I understand his point, but what's he unplace do?
Take it off.
It takes it off so that we can change it.
The cap.
For the cap.
Oh, okay, all right.
'Cause it was.
'Cause we would have voted no.
It was premature to place it before we amend it.
Yeah, 'cause I only voted no for that.
These can't be changed in the meeting. However, it's printed in the warrant, is how you're gonna go with it.
Right. So that's why I voted no too.
Wait, so they can't be changed?
I think these are general bylaws, and general bylaws may not be amended at town meeting, other than the correct, right?
Right, but we, we can add it at this meeting.
You can add it at this meeting, and in theory, if you, if you're doing a one further edit of the warrant before you publish it, you could correct some type of graphical mistakes. But I, I feel like substantive changes to the thing ought to be agreed by you folks before you actually make your recommendation.
Yeah, that, that's correct. It was premature to place it. So did we vote on unplacing it?
No, we didn't.
Let's unplace it.
So it's moved down second, isn't it?
But do we even ha, uh, yeah, we would do that, okay. So all in favor of unplacing it, with the idea that we can amend it and place it back on perhaps tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. So, um, what are you thinking about on a cap?
So I, I threw out fifty percent. I, I mean, I think it should be a percentage rather than a value, because the value, of course, you know, with inflation changes over time, I want this to be durable, but I'm open to what other people think about that number.
So I, I, I would say, anything we come up with tonight is gonna be arbitrary. Um, it, uh, a meeting of the HPC about a month ago, I suggested a cap, and, you know, it's their prerogative not to put one on. But they didn't come forward with a suggested cap. I, I'd prefer to hear from them. Um, and I know that sounds kinda vicious of me, but I, I don't mean it vicious, but I, I think it would be, um, better to be considered by them, period.
Well, fifty percent sounds reasonable to me, um, but.
I also think it's reasonable, but I also feel that I would like to hear their voice as well, to what they actually think and want. As opposed to us just saying fifty. We just, do you know what I mean?
And then I guess I would ask, um, fifty percent of, uh, the current tax on the property, or fifty percent of the improvement? So if they do, you know, add a two million improvement, is it then fifty percent of that two million?
So the way that I intended is, they have a million-dollar house, they would only be able to get credit for improvements of five hundred thousand.
Okay.
So improvements, you want to fifty percent of the current assessed value.
And it currently requires a minimum of twenty-five percent, so you would then, you would basically be creating a, a window then?
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Just, okay.
And, and, I mean, Paul, this was really to address your concern.
Yes.
The whole idea of tearing down a building except for two walls. I, I mean, I know.
Which is exactly what happens, at least in other communities. I know they say, I don't think they have, we have that experience here, but I, uh, uh, again, with my mom's house, it was, uh, we're gonna offer you, um, one point one million if we can totally tear it down. We'll offer a million if it, we can't tear it down, but it's a pseudo-tear-down. They left up two walls and then built, uh, basically, a huge honkin' house.
On the same foundation?
On the same foundation. And, uh, God bless them, right? You know, that's, you know, uh, entrepreneurism, capitalism, all that good stuff. But I don't think we need to incent that, and I think that changing a general bylaw to put a cap on it on the fly, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable with it, and, um, because, so we gotta right now craft out the language, not, you know, new, you know, like D, notwithstanding anything else to the contrary, the main, you know, the, the most you can get is X. And we, we could do that, and we might do that, but I just think it's, we waited this long. I think we can wait to annual town meeting. Yeah. Sorry, I'm coming hard.
No, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I wish we could get their view. I mean, John and Lee, I know they're not the whole committee, but they seem amenable to that for what that's worth, but, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean.
There's more people on the committee than that.
Yeah, but not only that, I mean, it is a general bylaw, and it's like a big, you know, I think it's a big deal just to change it, you know, within ten minutes of thinking about how to edit it. I mean, you know, I know, whenever you write anything, lots of things, you, you touch this, and it can affect that.
So let me ask Matt too. I mean, Town Council has, have they reviewed this already?
Um, I'm expecting the edits back today. Haven't received them yet, so no.
That's what they said earlier.
I, I, I know John, John thinks that, you know, we've got input, which is true, but, um, it wa, might be true, I, I don't know. But, but, but I, but certainly the, the issue that I'm raising, that's not the kind of thing Town Council's gonna give you, right? You know, I mean, I, I just, you know, she's looking at the legality, uh, and not, not the wisdom of, gee, you might be, unless it's such an obvious potential for her schnuckering, you know, uh, I don't think she's gonna give that.
My concern, and I mean, I.
Like, I like that.
My concern, and I, and, and like, you know, considering what you both are saying about, because I am supportive of this, but my concern would be that we would add some language now, and then somehow that would violate some type of law.
Right.
Which has happened recently. Which has happened recently, where.
Yeah, it looks like we're just doing it on the fly.
Yeah.
To make the conversation easier, I would recommend that if we did this, it, I don't get not in favor or against it, but just in this line here, the cost of rehab must be not less than 25% or more than 50% of the assessed value of the building. And that's where you would add the block in. And when you, when you make the motion at the end of the night on the full warrant, it will be subject to final legal review and legal edits if we were to something incorrectly. So she can't really change the content after tonight, but if she needs an extra day or two to review something, I guess any changes you make tonight, she's going to have to review tomorrow anyways.
Yeah.
It's not uncommon.
And that would be the logical place for it, right? No less than 25% or more than 50%. The other point I'll throw out is that, I mean, I appreciate wanting to hear the Historic Preservation Committee's opinion on this, since they did propose this, but it is a select board's warrant, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But even though what Matt had said right there, must be no less than 25%. Okay, so you're not going to get it unless you're throwing in 250 grand on a, I guess, a million dollar house?
Yeah.
Right, right. But cannot be more than 50%. So then, if it's more than 50%, you get nothing, you're not eligible. It's, I mean, it's, that just, it does seem kind of clunky to me, no offense. Not any clunky, but I'm like, that, that means you can't do it, you're not going to get the credit at all. So you were, you're saying?
I think that, I mean, the intent would be that, let's say you, you did something 100%, you doubled the value of the house, you'd only get credit for 50%. But that's a fair point, that if you'd have to, you have to word it in such a way that if you did 51%, you didn't go down to zero.
Right. I think we should wait.
I have to believe there are better ways to incent someone to improve these kinds of houses. I just do. So, you know, I'll stop and we can vote. You guys are welcome to talk about it, but.
I'm trying to see if there's a better section, at least for discussion purposes. Do, do we want to, like, quickly pull, are there three members who are in favor of a cap if I can find a good place to put it in tonight and have it reviewed by council? Do we want to, is this the way, you know, this is worth time? I know there's at least one.
Take a straw poll. I'm a no.
I, I feel like I'm in favor of the, of a cap, but I feel like we're doing this very, I don't know, I'd rather just, I'd rather wait and get their voice on it as well. I know it's our, I know it's our decision, but at the same time, I feel like.
So, this is.
I'm not.
Okay, Terry, are you potentially okay with a cap, putting it in tonight?
I was. By listening to both, I kind of think she's making some good points.
I'm not in solid ground.
Yeah, I feel like we're just now putting on a cap just because we want to.
And I know nothing, like.
Yeah.
Really?
Which is, yeah.
Very hesitant to impose my arbitrary number on this.
Yeah, so I think we need more time here.
I'm coming around to that point of view, too, even though, like, initially, there really isn't that much time before annual town meeting. And, yeah, I don't want to do something tonight that we're going to inadvertently miss. I support the concept, I support the idea of a cap, but I'm okay with telling the Historic Preservation Commission, okay, let's wait four months.
So, so, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
So that's where I'm at. So the article's unplaced, and I'm okay if it stays unplaced.
So if we, I'm happy, should I be on the, you know, board for annual town meeting to put it on for annual town meeting? I would look to having an individual cap, maybe an overall cap for the program, and, you know, that way we circumscribe our potential to get, you know, I don't know, fleeced by developers, that's not quite the nice way to put it, but, you know, just shorthand it. So, and we don't have to solve that tonight, but I think that we would, I could see a way where I would support it.
Okay, because that's good to know, because if you're in that position, other people are probably in that position as well. And since I do support this, I want to give this the best chance of.
Yep.
Yeah, I do as well. I was genuine when I told John, and I'm not, I'm not hating on it or trying to politic you guys behind the scene, just because, you know, I criticize it. But I think that we can, we can make it better for annual town meeting. So, we've unplaced it. Our friends on HPC will definitely look at it for annual town meeting with a few changes, and this was very productive, so.
Yeah, I thought it was a good discussion.
Yeah.
You had me going back and forth.
It was like a heavyweight, it was like Ali and Frasier.
I appreciate the town moderator for bringing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Once again, thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. Okay, is that the last one?
That's it, yes.
Wow.
Down to 13 articles.
Ooh, wow, mission accomplished.
Shall we close the warrant?
Uh, shall we close the warrant?
Yes.
I move that we close the special town meeting warrant as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? There being none?
Actually, can I add, subject to final review and edits by Town Council if necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
Seconding that as well.
Yes. So as amended, could we, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Super.
Under our hands.
Yes, under our hands.
Consent, consent agenda.
Okay, I did actually have an issue with the minutes that I'm, unfortunately, I didn't capture them in my notes, but I will bring it up, because I was, I was talking to Ben about the ratings agencies, and it said something other than ratings agencies, and I'm finding that out. Unless you can bring that up, too.
Do you want to fill out the consent agenda?
Raising, it says raising.
Raising, that's it. So.
On page four, yeah.
Yeah, there were a few instances of that. So if we can change where it says raising agencies to rating agencies, then I'm okay.
A citation effect?
Spot.
Um, do we look for a motion for the consent agenda with the minutes as amended?
Perfect.
Is anyone want to make that motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And.
With the minutes as amended?
With Sean, and you said that with the minutes amended?
With the, subject to the amendments to the minutes.
Got it.
As stated.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Tommy Andrews' report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Few good things to report this evening. Quick food bank update. Residents should be aware that despite the federal government shutting down, oop, food bank is still operating. Sorry, my Adobe is, I'm on the mouse, it's trying to turn on powered AI on Adobe. Community survey, the Bedford Health Department is still seeking input on their opioid settlement fund survey on how the town will prioritize that funding. This is a required part of the program. Please click the link to fill out that survey. From a traffic calming perspective, we're very happy to announce that after a lot of discussions with the Hemlock Lane and Hilltop Drive and Page Road neighborhoods, the town has installed the speed cushions. The difference between these and a speed bump is they have gaps in the middle and on the side, so emergency apparatus, particularly fire vehicles, don't have to slow down to pass them, because speed bumps dramatically slow down fire responses. So these will hopefully slow down cars and vehicles, but a fire truck, as you can see from the picture, would be able to drive down, you know, have their, one of their tires on the center lane and drive through without having to get slowed down. So it's a great traffic calming measure. They were installed after, you know, review process, review speeds in the neighborhood and our traffic calming policy. So they went through the whole process just as outlined, and this was the result. We are working on some larger permanent traffic calming solutions for the area, but this is temporary solution, be able to review. These are going to be removed in the winter for plowing operations.
You're going to have to go down there just to try that out.
Yeah, they're one of several potential options that could go in a neighborhood that meets certain speed criteria, but.
On foot, right?
Check them out.
Cool.
Oh.
Townwide flu clinic coming up on.
You're definitely a skateboarder.
Saturday, October 25.
You're definitely a skateboarder, yes, he is.
Back in the day. The Health Department has worked closely with our, our new consulting firm for mental health awareness to put on a, open to the public townwide trauma workshop. It's going to be held in the Reed Room on October 22. You know, so they're going to offer support and resources available to anyone who's having trouble for many reasons. Obviously, there's state things, federal things, you know, local things, things that may be happening at home. This would be a good resource for anyone who feels like they need some guidance or understanding on where our resources are. Coming up tomorrow, walk, bike, and roll to school day. Hope we have a lot of students participating. Hope everyone stays safe out there. Looks like the weather's going to hold out. Great community activity. Thank you to Danica Castle for, I think, close to five years of service to the town. She's moved on to an elder services director and co-hasset, which is much closer to home for her. And Doug Park retired from the DPW following 30 years of service. Want to welcome Logan DuPont to our team as a highway-heavy equipment operator, and again, highlight some positions we have in town, our social work position, and emergency communication officer position, and a school crossing guard position. We are doing, we're in the middle of interviews for ECOs, but certainly the other two we're still looking at. Flu staff flu clinic coming up, and a number of vacant board and committee positions listed here. So go online to apply if you are interested. And I have, later today, I dropped two documents in, one of them is in the packet here, just a quick update on the goals. So I threw October updates in here and also did some highlighting. We talked about trying this for the first time, green and yellow. Green is, you know, kind of 100% on track. It doesn't necessarily mean completed. The way I have this outlined is green is on track to be completed. Yellow is more for not started or may need some more information. So if I could kind of just quickly give you an example of what that might mean. 55th Great Road and Old Town Hall, we just haven't really started that activity yet. I don't put it red because there's no roadblock to us doing it, it's just it hadn't been the priority yet. Planning on starting those discussions right after our special town meeting with staff internally and getting a plan going. Coal merit and employee tenure, didn't feel comfortable putting this in green yet, because we've done a number of, you know, things listed here, employee socials, we're doing the trial period of the work week, but this is not a goal that had a specific tangible achievable item for me to do, like finish fire obstruction completion. It was sort of a mixture of things. So we have it in yellow now because it's something we're going to continue to work on, and if anyone has specific ideas throughout the year, you know, that goal is going to evolve. Future of peg access services, we've selected another date for a future working group meeting, December 3. Reached out to FinCom and School Committee to get some liaison involvement there. We're supporting those efforts, but as it's just working group efforts now, I kind of have it in yellow because we don't really know exactly what, if anything, is going to come out of that. If everyone's happy with the working group just continuing to meet throughout the year and make progress, eventually we can just turn that green. Local government participation, again, not a terribly well-defined, you know, goal, or a difficult to define goal, so I have it in yellow. What we've done so far is, from a capital perspective, we finalized the quotes, and so in the next few months, we're going to be moving forward with the AV replacements, both in this room and the Reed Room. That's going to include our hearing loop system, so both of these rooms will now be ready for visually impaired folks. We have one already in the COA. The library is now also looking to do a similar system. It's in yellow because this is only sort of one avenue you can go for local government participation. As new ideas come up, we may need to.
So Matt, if any board member had an idea to help on it, just drop you a line?
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually had another point about that, because one of the things we discussed when we were talking about that, an increase in participation, was the idea of the pre-town meeting session, which I think I was enthusiastic about in some others. I will offer, if someone else wants to do that with me, I would be willing to do that. I also appreciate that this town meeting seems to be, you know, pretty light in number of articles and perhaps attention to the articles, so I wouldn't, I, I, let's say I would push more for it at annual town meetings.
If you were, so I think I was one who was less than enthusiastic. However, if you had a, we could talk tomorrow, like, you know, if you had a date in mind, maybe I'd join you. I, you know, I was trying to say, I think it'd be kind of rough to, you know, make a staff person come in, but I think if it was just you and me, I, you know, volunteer from this, that's not quite so tough. So let's, we talked about, if that's okay, yeah.
Yeah, because I know when we did it, when we did it last year at this time, with 50 people, which is a lot, and I know there were things going on, like the big school question.
Yeah.
But, I mean, who knows? We could try to get.
The charter by law one could be confusing to people, so, you know, that'd be a good reason for me to attend. Yeah, that'd be kind of unfair.
So let's, let's.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk, yeah. Okay, anything else, Sean? Or Matt, I'm sorry, anything else on that, or Sean, were you, that's right?
No.
I think that's great, that's very helpful.
Okay, and, yeah, so yellow is going to mean I'm sort of looking for more feedback, or I want to make sure we keep it closer on a green as we're, if you look in your packet now, I don't have it up on the screen, I have another financial snapshot for you with the bar graph on where we are. Everything's looking kind of good as expected. So we'll attach that for the public consumption later. But that's now all I have.
Okay, so we're going to talk about liaison meetings. I just want to say, I'm going to ask, we have Chair of the Finance Committee here, I think I'm going to let him give a liaison comment or two, and then I'm going to jump to a comment about TAC that I want to check with the board on. Mr. Finance Chair, did you have?
I only had one comment, and it was about this chart. I like it a lot. My own piece of advice is don't strive for perfection. Just spiral it if you try and make it perfect. I think it's great just the way it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're happy with the level?
Thank you. Okay, so I've conversed with Dan that perhaps he could transfer the Transportation Advisory Committee liaison to someone other than Dan. I said I would be happy to do it, unless anyone wants to arm wrestle me for it. I'm happy to do so. And Dan, do you any thoughts you'd like to share, or should we?
I'm happy, I'm not happy. I'm disappointed that they met last year in Roswell, in that you know, in Poor, in that case, I don't belong in that committee. So I'm sorry to leave it, and I wish you success as liaison. You will have the same conflicts that I will.
Maybe different ones, I'm very creative.
And those conflicts should not happen for community members moving forward. That is my hope and aspiration. Deeply disappointing.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you for sharing that. Okay, I'll start, I'm actually, no liaison reports from me. Dan, do you have anything else?
So we have the air quality forum on the 30th, thank you, Sean and Terrence. 15, 20 people, wonderful research from Dr. Huda about handsome air quality. Hats looked at the final study last Wednesday, which I'm hoping to share with you when I have it, which is interesting and illuminating, and shows the impact on Bedford uniquely on takeoffs and approaches. Also, we talked about how the sustainable air fuels thing really is a false prophet, canard, not a thing. Terrence, I'm sure you've heard about it as well. At the hats meeting, there was nobody there from the Air Force Base because of the shutdown. And ESC met last week with a new chair, great meeting, lots of chatter about the energy and sustainability coordinated position, Matt, surprising nobody, and we need another member, so if you want to serve in a committee, it's a great committee.
Got it, thank you. Sean?
Sure, so CPC met, but, you know, they talked about, we talked about here.
Yep.
The planning board is spinning up their comprehensive plant advisory committee. It doesn't seem like this is exactly a liaison, but, you know, I, I said I was interested, others can say they're interested as well, but it seems like it's logical I would do it since I did it 10 years ago and have that experience on the planning board, so unless anyone else is telling me, I'll do that. The VCC will meet next Thursday, and the depot did get some more reasonable bids for the teardown of the VFW.
Oh, good, good.
So hopefully that will happen, and apparently it can actually happen in the winter with frozen ground, if that's what works out.
Yeah. Speaking of the depot, I think I might ask them if they would like to come in and give us an update on stuff. us an update on stuff and, you know, is the ongoing, that, I'll give Joe a call and just kind of prep him for, you know, the general stuff. Won't be hitting him with any hard fastballs, but just kind of hear more about it. Is that, Matt, did you have anything?
Yeah, absolutely, I talked to Ron about it today.
Yeah.
It's just over 24,000 for.
Well, that's better.
Yeah.
Is ceremonial sledgehammers are going to start?
Yeah. Oh, but, by the way, I will mention, I did attend a back meeting, and Terry Gleason was there, and he and I chatted a little bit, and he offered up an email to me that Matt sent around to this group, so look for your emails. It was a really thoughtful email, some really good ideas, and they're really, I think, not so much, might be a mix of select board kind of action or even school committee stuff, but really, like, staff stuff to do with, you know, at that level. But I think you guys will read it and say, hmm, good stuff. Okay, BOPA?
I don't have anything, but Tricentennial Committee will meet on Monday, this upcoming, or next Monday, 6:30.
Okay, got it. Terry?
This morning at 10:00 AM, I was at Disability Commission meeting. Matt was there along with Joe. They talked about several things, two of which were, one, they talked about trying to make Halloween more inclusive for kids with disabilities. And secondly, I know we look to have someone from the committee on the Wilson Park Ad-Hoc Committee, but it doesn't look like anyone's available, but the committee, the Disability Commission does want to work with Wilson Park, and right now, we're currently drafting a letter to sort of figure out what those parameters will be. And then earlier this evening, from 5:30 to 6:30, the library trustees had a little networking thing over at the library, and our chair was there.
Was that cake not unbelievable, by the way?
The cake was really good.
One, it was a good sheet? No.
Why?
You got to go. The sheet cake had, like, books, it was like a bookshelf, and.
That's cute.
I have to admit, that was pretty clever. Yeah.
And I had a couple of meetings coming up, don't really want to bore you with them, but there is one on October 21st, the Hanscom Field Advisory Commission, of which I represent Bedford's interests, along with the other four towns that surround the airfield. And on the 21st, they're going to be drafting a letter to ICE, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, so that has drawn some interest, so just want to make people aware of that.
All right, okay, thank you, Terry. Question for you, Matt. I think the TAC, it's not just a liaison, but a voting member?
Correct.
And thus, should this board vote me on as the new board representative? Do we need that as an agenda item, or would it be covered under the liaison stuff?
I might need to resign first.
Yeah, where it is a voting member, we, yeah, maybe we should do it more officially. I mean, I was thinking through consensus, but if it's voting, which it is.
Well, we have it on the next one.
I think we could.
I think we'll be fine if we wait to the next meeting. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, I think we're at the conclusion. I don't think we can draw this out anymore.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? There being none, we're dismissed.